Mr. Westbrook, as part of the approval of the agenda, if it's okay with you, we'd like to incorporate the recognition of the Angels World Series runners-up and the Ponytails World Series Champions, if that's okay with the board.
I'm sure the board is proud to see them. Y'all represent us very well.
I'm with the addition of the, uh, yes, the agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion out of two seconds to throw the agenda, all in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. All right. Come on, be glad to have you.
I pray that the leaders, since we're black, of United States of America, in the duty of honor for which standing is one nation under God, indivisible, with every deed and justice of our heart.
Mr. Westbrook, as part of the approval of the agenda, if it's okay with you, we'd like to incorporate the recognition of the Angels World Series runners-up and the Ponytails World Series Champions, if that's okay with the board.
I'm sure the board is proud to see them. Y'all represent us very well.
I'm with the addition of the, uh, yes, the agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion out of two seconds to throw the agenda, all in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. All right. Come on, be glad to have you.
Mr. Westbrook, you gonna take it from here?
I can.
Which group is this? That's where it's located. We're gonna stand up. Look where they're coming from. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, let's take a picture. And then we go from there.
All right, that's right.
We don't have to say eight. We don't have to say the mission. So maybe the short ones up top and the tall ones at the bottom? It's gonna be hard to do.
Are we doing the two teams separately?
No, we do them all together. Okay, we'll, Mark, do the teams separately and then get the commissioners to come on around. Everyone look right here. Now, three, one, two, three. Everyone smiley. One, two, three.
All right, don't move yet.
Maybe next one. Mr. Brooks, how's it sounding? You got to deal with his presidency?
Yeah, he's in Los Angeles this week.
Oh, wow. You can see Elijah in the tunnel here.
Yeah, he's, uh, starting.
He had decided where he would like to practice at. Is he the men's school too?
Oh, really? Okay.
No, 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 no.
Now, count to three. One, two, three. Hey, one more. One, two, three. And this will last one promise. One, two, three. I think the technical recognition coaches.
Oh, no, I don't understand about that. You want to say a little bit about it again?
Yes, sir.
Oh, you or something? Here, just use one of these microphones.
Oh, boy.
Make sure it's turned on. Well, this is, I'm trying to figure out how to do this, so. It's not on, I don't think.
Tessie.
First of all, let me say thank y'all, everyone. No, you're fine.
Uh, this is a little intimidating. All right, I have a floor. All right, um, I don't know, I'm starting to get a little nervous here. This is okay. Y'all cheer me on, I'm good to go. Is that loud enough? Thank you. Good, good group, both of them. But anyhow, I'll just be quick. Appreciate y'all letting us come over and kind of take over here for a little bit. Give me about, yes, sir, thank you. Uh, give me about three minutes and then we'll be out of here. And then, like I told them in the hallway there, the, uh, school board can have these girls now because we're, they're a lot, they're a lot of fun, uh, but we're ready to pass ownership back on to the school board, uh, at this point. But, um, all right, here we go. Today we have some special guests with us. Uh, you might recognize them if you follow local news outlets or social media within the community. Of course, the Jackson County Times does a great job of covering, uh, these girls as well. Um, but before we introduce these ladies, I think it's important for you to understand how they got here. Uh, this journey started in early March when they signed up to play local league softball at the Meere Complex. Uh, these athletes and their parents committed to the grind of the league softball regular season while juggling academic responsibilities and other obligations with school clubs and teams. Uh, the league regular season finished up in May, and each one of these little softballers were nominated as All-Stars to represent their respective age groups. The city of Marianna has a rich history of fielding competitive baseball and softball All-Star teams, and it's a privilege to get selected as an All-Star. But playing on an All-Star team requires a major commitment from the players, coaches, and families. A commitment to sacrifice the entire summer, two and a half months of summer afternoon practices preparing for the Dixie Softball World Series. With that being said, we are honored to announce that hard work paid off for these young ladies who proudly represented Marianna, Jackson County, and the great state of Florida. So, here we go. Uh, without further ado, we'd like to announce your 2025 Dixie Angels World Series Runners-Up. So Dixie Angels are ages 10 and under. Uh, this is the second time in Marianna history finishing as runner-up in the Angels Division. Uh, players who are also on the 2023 Dixie Angels Runner-Up team, please step forward. I think it's some of y'all, I'm not sure about you. So, again, in 2023, these girls were part of the Dixie Angels Runners-Up as well. All right, y'all going back. Think we're, uh, once again, Dixie Angels World Series Runner-Up. Hey, great job, ladies. Almost there, guys. All right, as they're getting positioned there, uh, once again, thanks for letting us take over, almost done here. Um, there you go. Where's the trophy at, Mike? If anybody wants to do any more pictures, there you go. Then we're done. There you go, hold it right there. All right, and finally, we'd like to announce your 2025 Dixie Ponytails World Series Champions. Thank you, thank you. Uh, first time in history a team from Marianna played in the Ponytails Division Championship. Uh, first time in history a team from Marianna won the Ponytails Championship. Uh, but some of these girls, this is the second time that they've had a Dixie World Series Championship. Uh, there were six of these girls who were also on the 2022 Dixie Angels World Series Championship Team. Uh, if they would step forward as well. But yeah, if you would, congratulate the 2022 Angels Team. Um, you know, another thing, this isn't necessarily written down. You know, you might say, oh, well, that group of girls is good. Uh, as far as both of them, I can promise you they didn't start that way. It was from hard work. I mean, we were there when they were little and, and they got better, uh, but they, they weren't born good, I can promise you that. All right, y'all can kind of step back a little bit and I'll finish this up. Uh, in closing, I want to say this summer was extra special with two teams from Marianna cheering each other on in the championship games. The way these girls bonded together and supported each other is so much more than a game of softball. On behalf of both teams, I'd like to thank the community for their overwhelming support. The Jackson County community made this dream a reality for these 24 young ladies, and we are proud to represent you. Thank you.
Go ahead, ladies. Thank you, Mr. King, for having us.
We thank you as well. Jackson County thanks you. We appreciate you. There's a lot of effort to win ballgame on the road. When everybody's got to get up, everybody's got to get to the ballpark, everybody got to be ready to play. And I admire every one of you, your parents, your coaches especially. But you know what they always told me? Everybody wanted to be a champion, but not many of them want to pay the price. Y'all paid the price, and we're so proud of you. We're so glad to have you. And let us know when you come by, okay? When you, you got a long ways to go, we got a short ways to go. But anyway, we, uh, we appreciate of everybody and everything.
Do you want to say something about?
Yeah, just we're extremely proud of all you girls. Uh, your hard work certainly paid off, uh, proved, uh, proved, uh, the winners. And as the chairman said, uh, Jackson County, city of Marianna, coaches, we're proud of, proud of all y'all for bringing on the others. Thank you.
You know, uh, Jackson County's always been known for agricultural and athletics. And over the years, we've had champion baseball teams, champion basketball teams, champion volleyball teams. But looks like we're on the eve of having a bunch of girls softball championships. And we thank you. I know it's hard work. Uh, thank you for what you did. Thank you for representing Jackson County.
Uh, I want to say congratulations to all y'all for the hard work that y'all did, and it takes hard work to get the place y'all got. In the same way, the hard work that the coaches put in to helping y'all get there. And congratulations again, y'all done a good job.
Good morning, thanks for being here, and thank you for representing Jackson County in such an excellent manner. Uh, when I look out and see you guys out here, uh, females, when I was growing up, the guys and girls all played together, you know, boozing cow pastors though, so it wasn't quite as manicured as, as it is today for you guys. But anyway, congratulations, you put good work up, and if we can assist in any way, just call upon us. Thank you.
Hey, last one, thank you for supporting you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, you see Jordan Law, he's in Ortho Pigs as well.
Um, he's vascular.
Oh, vascular, okay.
ENT.
Okay, 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 ENT, okay.
Ear, nose, and. Clay says ear, nose, and tennis.
Okay. I got you. I got you, I got you, that's true.
She disagree.
Okay. Well, he's brave enough to disagree. Yeah, he'll learn, won't he? That's the year's past, it's worth it, honey.
Once again, for a lot of effort.
All right, Mr. Westbrook, the way to get started?
I'm ready. And all the board looks like they're ready, they don't say anything.
Right, well, the first, uh, first item under section one is recognition of employee of the month, and I'll turn that over to Mr. Mayo.
All right, so first off, I just wanted to say happy 203rd birthday to Jackson County. On August 12th of 1822, Jackson County was formed by dividing Escambia County and was named after territorial governor Andrew Jackson, who went on to become the seventh president in 1829. This took place 11 months after the US government acquired the Florida territory from Spain. Where it was formed, there were an estimated 150 families living in the county that stretched from the Tocahatchee River to the Swanee River. There were no organized communities at the time, and, uh, so you can just imagine the challenges those first county commissioners faced. So happy birthday, Jackson County. My next order of business is to read a proclamation. Uh, whereas Jackson County has established an employee of the month program to recognize one employee to represent the various departments. Whereas Terry Harden began her employment with Jackson County on April 1st of 2019. She currently serves as the executive secretary for the UFIPAS Extension Service and has been selected as the employee of the month for August of 2025 for the standards she has displayed in the performance of her job duties. Whereas Terry is a hardworking, dedicated, and knowledgeable employee. Every day, she goes above and beyond her job duties. She strives for excellence every day. Whereas Terry is dedicated to the mission of assisting local citizens and staff, making the extension service the best it can be. She puts the needs of others above her own on a daily basis. She will cut her lunch hour short or stay late to help people with whatever they need, from planting flowers near the entrance and handweeding the small beds to helping with all the 4H activities and ensuring our people are well-served. She is not one to look for someone else to do what she can do herself. Whereas, she is affectionately known as the office mom because she cares and will listen and finds way to help. She always practices practical advice and gives her time to make things better. She plays a vital role in the success of our team, yet she is not motivated by recognition or special treatment. Terry takes pride in what can be accomplished when everyone works well together. She ensures that our citizens get the assistance they need and connects them with the right resource people that can help, even if it's not our department. Terry makes Jackson County a better place to live and work. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Jackson County, Florida commands and congratulates Terry Harden on her selection as the employee of the month for August of 2025.
Mr. Chairman. Uh, first of all, congratulations, Ms. Harden, AKA Office Mom. Uh, it's a well-deserved honor, and, uh, I'll, uh, uh, say that, uh, we'll go ahead and reclaim Ms. Harden as the employee of the month for August of 2025. Authorize a day off, a check in the amount of $50, adopt the proclamation, and authorize you as the chairman to sign.
I can do that. Don't spend that $50 dollar on something.
I'll second that motion.
That motion in a second. Anybody? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your, your, your work and your abilities. All right, go right ahead.
Mr. Chairman, the next item of business is recognition of employees with their years of service.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
So I have before you today, Mr. Melvin Lewis, celebrating his five-year anniversary with Jackson County Parks Recycling Department. Uh, Melvin is a masculine name with Irish and Scottish origins, meaning gentle chieftain or armored chief, both of which describe Melvin. Melvin is named after his dad and has six kids, three boys and three girls. He loves to fish in his spare time and spend time with his family. Melvin came to work for Parks Recycling five years ago after an extensive career with the state of Florida. Melvin's worked at Sunland, um, in Marianna, and then also worked at a drug rehab facility, facility totaling 15 years. Um, today we chose the character trait of gentleness versus harshness. Um, uh, his gentleness is showing personal care and concern in meeting the needs of others. Melvin is our gentle giant, uh, and is deeply loyal and compassionate in both his professional and personal life. Melvin walks through life with his faith constantly, and his devoted son is always taking care of his parents. His greatest accomplishments are his kids, and he is proud of all they do. Melvin has so many qualities, but the one that stands out is his gentleness. His gentle and happy demeanor helps on the toughest and hottest days in the department, and I know we can always count on Melvin regardless of the task. Thank you, Melvin.
Thank you. Thank you, Melvin.
Ready for the next?
Go ahead.
Okay, um, under section one, item three, resolution, uh, this is a, uh, staff is requesting the board to pass resolution adopting the comprehensive emergency management plan uh, for the, uh, emergency management services. This is a requirement by the Florida Administrative Code as well as Florida statutes. Uh, the state has reviewed our plan and accepted it, and with, with the updates incorporated by staff, we're asking the commission to, uh, pass the resolution.
I heard your recommendation. What's the board's pleasure?
I offer a motion to approve the, uh, approve the 2025 comprehensive emergency management plan and authorize you as the chairman to sign.
I'll get it done. Got a motion out of second for approval, all in favor, right hand. Unanimous, thanks.
Mr. Westbrook, the next item under the same section is the resolution asking the board to adopt resolution, uh, as it relates to an amendment to our, uh, amendment to the FDOT supplemental agreement, uh, which will incorporate additional dollars into the funds set aside to improve, Scott funds set aside to improve bridge on US's, uh, bridge. Asking the commission to approve the resolution.
Y'all heard the recommendation?
Make a motion to approve it.
Got a motion, second to approve by Mr. Donna Rowe, uh, motion by Mr. Gritsfield. All in favor, signal five, raise your right hand. Get out.
Mr. Westbrook, uh, moving on to item, section four, uh, uh, the first item is the consent agenda, but I would like to point out, uh, the item number C, which is, uh, required amendment to our subdivision ordinance by the state of Florida. Uh, we are, uh, going to be preparing revised ordinance which addresses the changes to Florida's, uh, state constitution or statutes as it relates to subdivision approval. The state has determined that, uh, the approval of the subdivision plat or modification to a plat no longer requires the governing board to approve it. It will be approved by, uh, staff, for lack of a better way to say it, uh, because the board actually approved the ordinance in the first place. So as long as it meets the ordinance requirements as determined by staff, then there's no need for it to come back to the governing body. That's my interpretation of it. So we're, we're going to move forward with that so that it will come back to, our modification will come back to the board in the near future. Uh, unless you have any questions, uh, we'll, we'll head and prepare that ordinance.
I'm just glad somebody with a state knows what we need, isn't that one?
Michelle, is that your interpretation as well?
Yeah. I haven't thought on it.
All right, you heard the recommendation. We, what's the board's pleasure?
I offer a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the explanation given by Mr. Dean.
All right, got a motion in a second to my left. All in favor, raise your hand.
Question, are we?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
No, no problem. Are we approving the entire consent agenda at this point in time or?
My motion will still approve the entire consent agenda.
Okay, then. Then I noticed that, um, there's a contract to Holy College that I abstained from voting on that because I'm employed by Holy College.
We recognize that. Chair recognized the exception. So we've already voted, so I guess we'll move on.
Uh, item number two, under this section, Mr. Westbrook, is the approval of the fiscal year 25, 26 law enforcement, uh, agreement between the Jackson County Sheriff's Department and Holy College to provide, uh, services at Holy College campus. We're asking for the board to approve the agreement.
Heard the recommendation.
Is this the item that you were?
Yeah, I, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, this is the one that I abstained from listening.
We can scratch too, if you want.
Make a motion to approve it.
Got a motion to approve? Got a second? All in favor, raise your hand.
And Mr. Pierce, for the, for the record, I'm assuming you abstained from voting on?
Yes, yes, I was one ahead, I'm sorry about that.
Okay, moving on to item.
Go ahead.
Item three, uh, as it relates to the, uh, TDC for the final edits request to the TDC for five-year plan. I think Kelsey's met with everybody, and I think she's going to, uh, summarize what she's, uh, discovered in meeting with the commissioners, so Miss Kelsey.
Good morning.
Good morning. Got everybody to say yes, go ahead.
There we go. All right, so I've had a chance to be able to meet with each of you to discuss the tourism strategic plan, which will essentially create a roadmap for how we want to best utilize our, our tourism tax dollars over the next five years. This is our final opportunity to provide any feedback or requested edits that you'd like to see before the company that's developing the plan for us comes back and gives you the formal presentation for y'all to adopt. So our hope is that any feedback that you have, we can be able to address today, um, or have all final edits no later than Friday. I'm also hoping that we can set a special meeting for hopefully the first week of September for them to come back and do the formal presentation for you all. Some of the core things that stood out from this plan that we all discussed is that ultimately, this is our community's plan. This isn't Kelsey Jackson's plan, or this isn't a staff member's plan. These are, uh, suggestions and priorities that have come from reviewing a number of strategic and master plans that are currently developed through our community and for our community. And it was also developed through a series of different engagement efforts over the last year, uh, in developing this plan. Those core priorities that we, that stood out were better utilization and diversification of our outdoor amenities, more promotion and activities for our youth, and more promotion of events that are happening within Jackson County, and, um, better utilization of the tax dollars that we are stewards of. This is divided into three core priorities and focuses, uh, which is strengthening the TDC as an organization, marketing ourselves responsibly, and developing and managing our destination drivers. So the top things that are bringing people into the county. Our tourism board was able to review this yesterday, and some of the, uh, recommendations that came from those discussions align really closely with some of the feedback that you all provided as well, such as, um, developing a parks and public spaces assessment that helps us understand what spaces are currently being overutilized in overcapacity, such as Magnolia Landing, and what spaces are underutilized. So from that conversation yesterday, we'd like to make an edit that essentially outlines, here's all of the boat landings and public spaces that we have that, and determine what is overcapacity. and determine what is overcapacity and where can we divert people over to, and where we can determine how to best utilize our dollars and prioritize what boat landings or what public spaces need to be prioritized in developing or expanding further. Additionally, making sure that we are marketing to our community, so that way they're aware of some of the things that are going on, such as the expansion out at the Mir, or the things that are happening at Endeavor with the convention center and museum, and developing strategic partnerships with businesses and organizations within and surrounding Jackson County, such as local chamber of commerce's and regional chambers. That way we can make sure that we are developing responsibly and taking, uh, guidance from our neighbors that are succeeding in their development efforts themselves. So, um, I've already had a chance to meet with you individually, but as a board, if you'd like to have any additional discussions about things that stood out to you, or things that you'd like to see included within this plan, um, I'd be happy to hear, uh, those suggestions and feedback today.
I might comment that I spent a lot of time reading your reviews, and that was a very good piece of reading for me, for Jackson County. And I'm sure all the members of the board read it all, so we're, I'm, I'm very pleased with it. I'm, I hope they are too. You heard the recommendation?
Oh, well, I, you know, of course, I've, I've had an opportunity like the rest of you to meet with Kelsey, and I sat in on the TDC meeting yesterday and, uh, was, uh, part of the discussions that we had. Uh, I have read all the way through it. I'm in the process of re-reading it with a little bit more detail. I guess the key point to take away is that if there are additional questions or edits, try to get those to Kelsey by, by this Friday, uh, so that those can be, uh, addressed in some manner, uh, so that we can put together a, uh, a special meeting with Kimberly Horn, uh, to come in and present the final document, and you're requesting that, that we set that meeting today?
If, if possible. Um, I've got proposed, I think, in the agenda item, um, potentially September third or fourth. Uh, alternatively, I could be able to see if, if Kimberly Horn would be able to come out before our meeting later in August, uh, maybe an hour or so before the meeting is set to start, if that would be easier for scheduling-wise, uh, completely at y'all's, y'all's discretion.
Third is a Wednesday. I know that's a, fourth obviously is a Thursday. And, and those are dates that Kimberly Horn would be available to come in. So our first meeting, I guess, chairman would be, uh, Tuesday, the second would be the ninth, or our regular morning meeting would be the ninth?
Yes, it would, if you're gonna park the ninth of September.
Our, our regular meeting is the ninth of September.
Yes.
And, uh, I think we, we're, we're hoping to maybe do a special meeting with Kimberly Horn. As, as, trying to go through this app, uh, is one item in our regular agenda, which I think is probably a good, depends on, that's the wishes of the board.
And do it before the meeting?
I'm thinking doing it on the, the, the third or the fourth.
Prior to the meeting?
Yeah.
Pleasure, the board.
Let the board play.
Fourth would be better for me. That's a Thursday. That's just, just me.
Yeah, well, I'll do it off on the Thursday afternoon.
Are you, are you doing a motion for that?
Uh, within a time, what?
With, you know, are the rest of the board members, commission members of medical pharmacy?
Do it that time?
I was doing the fourth.
In the morning, probably in the morning.
What time, Kips?
Um, I could do in the morning. The afternoon is a little bit more freed up, uh, if, if possible. But we can do anytime that works best for the five of you.
What, what about one o'clock, right around one thirty?
One thirty would be better.
One thirty.
One thirty on the fourth?
Yes, sir. Is that pleasing with you? Up to you.
I'm available for four in each.
Me too.
I'll offer, I'll, I'll go ahead and offer a motion, then we set a special meeting to hear the presentation on the strategic, the TDC strategic plan with, uh, Kimberly Horn for September of the fourth, one thirty.
Got a motion and a second for the meeting on the fourth at one thirty? All in favor, raise your right hand. At unanimous. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. You did a good job as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
Be ready for the next item, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, please.
Okay, next item is also associated with the TDC. I've spoken with each commissioner, uh, about the change in the, uh, about asking for board approval of rental policies for Jackson County Board of County Commissioners as it relates to the facilities that are rented. Uh, Kelsey has worked really hard to modify that, uh, agreement, the policy, and also establish a new fee schedule associated with that policy. Uh, again, I've spoken with each commissioner about this, if, uh, some of the changes that were incorporated into the policy, and we're asking for any feedback, and if there is none, then asking for approval. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Let the board play. Y'all heard the recommendation?
Make a motion to approve it.
Motion by Mr. Gretzville. Think a second about Dr. Fire. All in favor, raise your right hand. Move it, unanimous. Thank you, ma'am.
Next item, Mr. Westbrook, uh, the, we're asking for board approval of educational reimbursement contracts for fire rescue employees that will be attending the upcoming paramedic program at Holy College. Uh, if you remember, we just modified that agreement where if for some reason the paramedic, uh, individuals go into the school, do not follow through with the employment requirement, then, uh, we have a little bit more key to, uh, recapture, call back the funding that we provided. Uh, so we're asking for the commission to approve, uh, the contracts for these individuals.
Y'all heard it. Move, move, move.
And I'll second with a question. Uh, Michelle, you feel pretty comfortable with the fact that we tightened up, uh, the reimbursement, uh, regulations or restrictions, uh, hopefully do a little bit better job of making sure that we get paid back?
Right, no. Yes, sir, door.
Uh, is that, if we send them through it, they come back and work two months? Is it what they go, was paraded, or is it full?
It is paraded if they finish the program and they start working for us, but, uh, for every month that they work for us, there's a percentage forgiven.
Got motions and second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same side. Get out of there. Moving on. Very good job.
Uh, Mr. Westbrook, uh, we're, uh, requesting board approvals to utilize life scan wellness center, uh, centers for, to complete the annual firefighter fiscal exam. Uh, annually, according to NFPA, uh, we're required to have fiscal, each firefighter is required to have a physical. Uh, we're asking the board to allow us to piggyback on the city of Clearwater's contract that they already have with these folks. And I'll let Mr. Brunner chime in if he wants to, but the, we have used them in the past and potentially will be, are, doing an RFP ourselves, uh, in the future. But we have the authorization from Clearwater to piggyback on that contract. Is this, uh, is this compliant with the budget, the amount?
Yes, sir. And Mr. Brunner, we're gonna have this done, um, prior to October the first, that's right.
All right, let's the board play. Got a motion by Mr. Bryant. I was thinking about Mr. Gretzville. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same side. Moving on. Get out of there.
Uh, Mr. Westbrook.
Happy hour, wait.
Item number seven is a budgeted item for the fiscal year that we're in right now. It is for the acquisition and purchase of, uh, hardware and software for the IT director to be installed in various places in various, uh, county buildings around Jackson County. Uh, it is a budgeted item. It would be, it's being purchased off state, uh, state contract, state contract, uh, purchase. Uh, so we're asking for the board to approve the budgeted, uh, capital purchase.
Does that mean every time a computer goes down, they'll send us some money back on that hardware?
I wouldn't look for it.
I wouldn't know the difference. Anyway, you heard the recommendation of the?
I move.
Okay, we got a motion and a second right there for Dr. Fire, Mr. Gretzville. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion, get out of there. Move ahead. Yes, sir. Unless you've got something. Hey.
No, sir.
Okay.
The item number eight, Mr. Westbrook, this is.
Go ahead.
Who is the vendor for that, for that contract? Mr. Dean, if you get mine, so we can make a note of it, so we'll be looking for that.
You gonna hold him. You gonna hold him when this thing turns up.
Bill comes through, who, who it's gonna be coming from?
Is it all one vendor, or is it?
It's, uh, one vendor. Uh, Mr. Andrew Grayson, are you?
There he is. He come out of the woodwork.
It is for the, um, high key purchase. The, is there a copy given?
Yeah, Avixio. We've done business with them before. That, that's an alternate name that they use for educational and security.
But we don't have the name of the vendor, uh, or of who you're purchasing it from.
It's Avixio.
Who was?
Avixio.
Avixio.
Was that the only bidder?
Uh, there, there wasn't a bidder. It's state contract.
Fair enough.
And that meets our, us purchasing policy requirement.
We just know who it is gonna be.
Got it fixed up now, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Move ahead.
Uh, Mr. Westbrook, the next item, number eight, is a request for board approval, uh, to go out and do a qual, request for qualifications for CDI services on Pusser Road. Uh, we were awarded multiple grants to pave Pusser Road. Uh, we, uh, went out for bids. We received bids. Uh, we now need to engage the services of, for CEI construction engineer inspector, and we're asking the board to authorize us to go out for, uh, request for qualifications.
Just one quick question if I may. We still have a holdup with two or three people there about the, about the right of way?
The easement, yes, sir. Uh, we're meeting on that again this afternoon. If you'd like to join us, there's multiple.
Be glad to.
Multiple people that, um, are very, um, have a lot of reservations about giving an easement to.
And, and if I'm understanding it right, not very much at all.
Um, and I'll let.
They may ten feet, something like that.
Could be two feet. It could be ten feet. Could be, you know, uh, fourteen, I think, is the biggest number that I've seen in conjunction with that. But this is primarily for drainage work on the side of Pusser Road adjacent to Pusser. Additional right of way to accomplish the, the ditch, swells, and things of that nature.
That's a wet place. If I go down that road in the middle of it, you struggle not to bog down sometimes.
No, I mentioned this before, but I'm sure that, uh, just before you get to seventy-three, it's always been a bad problem. And no matter what you did, it seemed like to the road, it still never corrected the problem. So, uh, you know, I guess they, you'll take that consideration.
And, you know, I'll let Mr. Daniels, if he wants to jump in, but, um, you know, as an example, that is the, probably one of the worst spots on the road, and the landowners, uh, are, have a lot of reservations about, uh, branding and easement to help resolve that problem. Part of what prompted.
Trying to iterate.
Part of what prompted the initiation of at least the east end of that project was the drainage, uh, there along the north side of Pusser Road where that pond is. It was causing, uh, problems with several of the property owners, uh, septic tank and drain fields, where plumbing is not working.
And rain.
And so there was a, a fellow, and I can't remember his name, but he was actually pumping that pond out. Do you remember who I'm talking about?
Mr. Matthews. Mr. Matthews, I think, was running that pump.
Glenn Hobbs.
Who was it?
Glenn Hobbs.
Glenn Hobbs.
And they were actually running a pump and pumping that out, pumping it to the south side of, uh, of, uh, Pusser Road. And that's kind of what instigated a portion of this.
Coming in the tires.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but this project will, uh, is, is actually correcting that drainage problem. It's raising Pusser Road there. It's actually extending the ditch and swell, uh, further to the south and getting all of that water that's in that pond underneath seventy-three into the river. Is that correct?
That is the agent, the hazard mitigation portion of the project.
I know they can't get it all out, but it keeps them from getting up to the houses. But I know that has been a concern, 'cause at one time that was in my district, that, for the redistricting, and had a lot of problem with that, and I just wanna make sure, bring it up to, they look, take a good look at that, 'cause that is a, a real problem. There, it might be corrected some now to keep the, you won't never be able to keep the water out of the pond, but to keep it from backing up and backing into people under their house.
But again, Mr. Gretzville, um, you know, out of the fifteen easements that we need, we only have about three or four families that are co-op.
Okay.
And, and I guess this will be the question, I think I've asked this before. If we're unable to, uh, get all of those easements, is that going to jeopardize being able to take care of that drainage problem? And that's my understanding. I mean, and I'll let Michelle chime in too, but as I understand it, and Hunter's already sent us something, I don't think you can, eminent domain is, uh, a possibility in conjunction with the grant.
That don't check out.
Yeah, and, and some of the grants get really funny when we get into, um, eminent domain. There's some very specific processes that we have to follow. It, it will significantly increase your cost and the amount of time that it will take to, to get the project underway.
You know, at some point in time, if it becomes too problematic, then, you know, you, this is part of a, uh, this is part of an overall paving project that is supposed to pave Pusser Road all the way from seventy-three all the way back out to the county highway. Uh, the, the middle portion and the west portion are being done under other grant monies, and are gonna happen. A part of it's, uh, with a circle K, the realignment of that road way down to the west end. Uh, that's, that's gonna happen regardless of whether the east end happens. And there's proxy, there's three phases. Uh, the first phase on the, I guess you call it the west end of the road is the governor's job, or grant money. The second phase is, should be the FDOT money. And then the third phase closest to highway seventy-three is HMGP slash possibly CDG. But, um, yeah, the, the big easement is the phase that's closest to seventy-three.
Well, the, the first house there, Glenn's house, you mentioned his son's an attorney. And, uh, he's had some discussion with him about that, 'cause they were about to say yes, and then he slowed him up, I think. But anyway, we just have to do what we got to.
What, what happens if, if no one signs that? Do we just back off the money that project?
I think, I think the project is off great.
On that end of that eastern road. If people don't want. And I, I guess that phase would be from Wind Road to highway seventy-three.
Yes, sir.
Wind Street, Wind Street to highway seventy-three. We just, you know, we don't, we don't do the improvements, and we don't pave that portion of the road. And that's where, if you, if you drive that road, which I, I do from time to time, and that big hill is, you go up the hill and down the hill, and you would think that, so, you think that they would want that road paved, but if they, what majority of the property owners don't, so be it then. Play that. Yes, sir.
Okay, have Mr. Daniels, uh, could design modifications he made for those who are unwilling to, to give property, that will not jeopardize any type of project?
That is part of what we're meeting with D H M this afternoon. Mr. Dean mentioned, um, we're gonna discuss what properties that is an option. Unfortunately, some is not. So the idea was to create a new drainage away from Pusser Road that will go under seventy-three, but if we can't get the water away from seventy-three, then no, no other aspects of the project are justified.
Thank you.
I clean that water back up in all those houses to the north side of there, just like Mr. Gretz. Mr. Harris, it ruined Chad Harris's house right there. It's sitting there dilapidated now, as well as the other one on the south side. So he used equipment. He borrowed from me to prop that water, to keep it out of his house.
If we, uh, if we authorize approval to go ahead and, uh, seek, uh, put out an RFQ for CEI services, uh, if, that's open up for any farm. It's not just limited just to those that are under continuing service contract. And, uh, I know that David Melvin's group was, did the, uh, did the design work on that. Would he be? It's my understanding there's a cause of the requirements. He would not be able to submit a qualification package.
It's my understanding there's a cause of the requirements, he would not be able to submit a qualification package.
With those clarifications, I'll offer a motion that, uh, we authorize staff to, uh, go, put out a, uh, RFQ for Pusser Road CEI services.
Second.
Oh, you're in a second, uh, President, all in favor?
Have questions here. I don't know, are we ready to advertise for CEI services without having the design finalized?
It is finalized, Mr. Spire.
Project's already been bid.
Okay. But I thought there was an issue with, uh, possibly having you in the domain, or am I thinking about a different project?
Now, that one portion of the project, the east end of Pusser Road, is the only portion of the project that is in jeopardy. The other two phases from Wind Road to Air Base Road, and from Air Base Road to County Highway, those are still, uh, they're funded, and, uh, we have bids on them, and we're, uh, potentially ready to move forward with construction. So we would need CEI services on those two phases.
But there would be a, a part that we're not ready for CEI services, am I correct?
Sorry.
There would be a part of Pusser Road that we're not ready for CEI services?
That we may not perform construction on, but that's just one of three phases that we potentially wouldn't move forward on.
So just for clarification, the, the CEI provider, the vendor, would be, would be selected based on qualifications, and then, uh, in the negotiation phase, uh, that'll be ironed out whether the, the east end will be part of that package or whether it won't be. And, and the, the, their fee would be, uh, reduced, uh, if, uh, if there, if CEI services are not gonna be required for that east end.
But just one portion is ready to go.
Do we have a deadline? Uh, I see Mr. Potts back there, but typically the RFQ is a thirty-day advertisement, plus or minus, and then, uh, it would come, the sub, submittals would come in, be reviewed, and then, uh, the board would, uh, make the selection.
No, I'm talking about as far as getting the, uh, easements, is there a deadline on that, too?
Technically, I guess there is no deadline, but as has been discussed, we can't wait forever, uh, in order to move this project forward. We have bids, we can't, the, the contractor's holding the bid price for, so at some point in the very near future, we're gonna have to pull the trigger and move forward.
And I guess that'll be a commission decision as to, after your meeting with the affected property owners, uh, you'll come back and report, you know, we've made progress with these, we've not made any progress with these, what do you guys wanna do, and that'll be a commission decision.
I did wanna add one more thing, uh, Lucas has worked with all the funding agencies, they are aware of what we're working on, and we do have funding secured in the next calendar year. So funding at this time is not in jeopardy, but how, we do have, you know, a bid price that a contractor's working on, so we are trying to be diligent, making sure we have everything ready to go.
Just out of curiosity, I think I've asked this, who, who is the low bidder?
Extreme Land Restoration.
Thank you.
And where they from?
Uh, here in Jackson County, I'm not sure exactly where their office is, they've performed a lot of the work and sneeze that's going on, and they've done some other county jobs.
And say their name again.
Extreme Land Restoration.
Is that for the whole project, they gonna do the whole project?
Yes, sir, so we bid as, uh, as one with, as three elements, so we got bid prices for each one, so in the event that one does not have.
Two got the other two.
That's right.
Everybody happy now?
Tickle the bit.
Sir?
Tickle the bit.
Me too.
I made a motion.
Got a motion, I'll have a second, all I gotta do is vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. That satisfy you, Mr. Clerk, thank you, all right, thank you, move on.
Move on, uh, Mr. Westbrook, item number nine, request for board approval of the award to the state lobbyist's lobbying services, uh, the county went through the appropriate process to request RFPs, RFQs. Uh, the submittals were renewed and ranked by the Board of County Commissioners, and the, uh, the selection is, uh, Shoemaker Advisors in Florida, we're asking the board to, uh, approve the award.
I move approval.
Move an approval in two seconds. All in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, unanimous consent, move ahead.
Uh, item number ten, Mr. Westbrook, his request for board approval amendment number two for the CDVG, uh, grant that we received as it relates to the, uh, restoration of the, what used to be known as Madison's Restaurant. The county did not, uh, fund the acquisition of that property, it was already owned by, uh, an individual, the county is just helping to fund the restoration of the property, not the acquisition of the property. So we need to extend the, uh, sunset date on the agreement of, uh, amendment number two to M zero zero four three, asking for board approval of the amendment.
And, and the county, the county was engaged since, like, I have architects, uh, Destin was, was hired for that job, and they're in the process of working with the property owner to develop a, a design. We're spending those grand dollars, and are they getting pretty close to, to, uh, finalizing those design documents, or?
They are, so they did make a change in the, uh, in the plan, so the, the goal was to have, uh, a designed set of plans ready for bid, once this project is complete, we've dagged, um, but they are wrapping that up as of speak.
And we're meeting on that tomorrow, with the, try and push along even harder.
And your, first part of your statement that I meant to go was, the county is gonna help them pay for that?
Yeah, the funding that we received is to help pay for the restoration of the building.
We got money from the government?
That's right, federal government funded, the C, to the, money went to it from the bids to the state, and the state awarded the CDVG.
They didn't drop any of it, did they?
Sir.
They didn't drop any of it on the way?
Not, not, not that I'm aware of.
I don't mean to be facetious, I just, that's been a long time coming.
Yes, sir.
With the information, uh, provided by staff, I'll prove, uh, I'll offer a motion to approve the amendment, authorize you as chairman to sign.
Motion, got a second, do approve, any other discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, unanimous consent, move along.
Uh, Mr. Westbrook, it's my understanding, uh, prior to being here, that the board authorized, uh, staff to ask other municipalities in Jackson County if they wanted the county to perform debris cleanup and monitoring, should there be another natural disaster that occurred in Jackson County. The agreement was put together and approved, and it has been, been sent to all the municipalities, and we're asking the, uh, board to approve the agreements and allow the chair to sign.
The chair can sign.
Make a motion to approve it.
Okay, have a motion.
I'll second.
I got a second. All in favor of that agreement, sitting five, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, move along, unanimous consent.
Mr. Westbrook, this is a, um, asking the board for approval of change order number two for the Jackson County Museum, the demolition phase of the, uh, project. This change order, all it does is reduces the contract by eight thousand dollars and extends the timeframe of the contract by sixty-two days. We're asking board to approve the, the change order for this phase of the, of the project.
Mr. Don Row, you could sign it?
Okay. I will.
All right. You've heard the recommendation, what's the pleasure to rest the vote?
Make a motion to approve this.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a second, Dr. Spire, all in favor, raise your hand. Four zero, thank you.
Accused myself due to public.
Mr. Don Row accused.
Okay, item number thirteen, Mr. Westbrook.
Yes.
Uh, this, this item is associated with the resolution previously passed, passed by the board, uh, this is associated with the asking the board for approval FDOT supplemental agreement, uh, G two M eighty-eight, associated with Ulysses Bridge. Uh, this incorporates additional money into the contract, into the grant, so that we can, uh, meet the, the, the bid price that was submitted for the restoration of that bridge. So all we're doing is moving additional grant money from the state of Florida into the agreement, so we're asking for the board to approve the amendment to be agreed.
Go ahead, Doc. Dean, I believe that, that current bridge is a wood structure, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is it?
Red, keeping out of trouble here.
Is, is it, is it intended to restore it, wood, wood, wood or some type material?
Yeah, it'll be replaced back with wood.
Okay, but at the present state, safe to travel and everything, or do we have to?
It is, there is no road closure associated with the project.
Okay.
However, it will once construction begins.
Okay.
Who, who's the contractor on that?
Extreme.
Extreme is what?
Any other question? Do I have a motion?
I may, well.
Got a motion, Mr. Crutchfield. Got a second, Doc Spire, all in favor, raise your hand, all opposed, same sign, move along, unanimous consent.
Okay, uh, Mr. Westbrook, now that we, uh, approved the resolution and we incorporated additional money into the Ulysses Bridge project.
Yes, sir.
We now want to award, uh, the, asking for board approval to award the Ulysses Bridge, please got prepared, uh, to extreme, asking for board approval to award.
You ever think you in order on the plan?
Yes, sir.
What's the board's pleasure? Got a motion?
Second.
Got two seconds.
Okay.
That's all right, you fine, you just fine, I'm glad to have, I have to keep it in reserve.
Got one in reserve.
All in favor, taking five votes, Ulysses Bridge being rebuilt, move along.
Mr. Westbrook, item number fifteen, is request for board approval of project Charles' contract and change order number one, uh, the change order actually, uh, it, it go back and back up, or this is for Mashburn Road, and this is to pave Mashburn Road. To guide the drainage and stormwater retention and all the other things associated with that. When we originally, originally awarded this, there was a, a portion of the project that could not be, uh, funded with, uh, the rural infrastructure fund dollars that we received, which was the asphalt that would go on the road. Because this was federal dollars that came to the state, and the state awarded, uh, to Jackson County for this project. Uh, the amount of money that was, uh, associated with the asphalt paving was approximately three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Mr. Melvin and his team have been successful at negotiating a change order which reduces the amount of money that we would have to come up to put asphalt down, which was three hundred and twenty something thousand dollars, down to thirty something, thirty-two thousand, uh, dollars. And so that's the change order, we're asking the board to approve the, uh, change order with, uh, number one with Anderson Columbia, uh, for the project Charles, which is the paving of Mashburn Road.
So that's gonna save us three hundred thousand dollars, is that what you, I hear?
And, um, Rhett, uh, we're, uh, uh, getting the board to approve the award as well on, that's right, yeah.
Contract, yeah.
Additional, award the contract and approve change order number one.
And save the three hundred thousand?
And saves approximately three hundred thousand.
Chairman, move approval of change order and the award of the, of the, uh, work.
A motion of Doc Spire, second by Mr. Crutchfield, everybody's approved, raise your right hand, unanimous consent. I, I wanna back up one second if I might, and I apologize to this board. What is, on Ulysses Road, what is the weight limit there on that bridge?
I don't know that.
Say it again.
Ninety-nine tons are what most are posted, but I don't know about this one.
And is it gonna be a wood structure?
Yes, sir.
I sure wanna buy some of that wood, but anyway, just wanted to know, I apologize for the holdup, go ahead.
Sure.
Can I ask, ask, to get back to your question, uh, to me, uh?
Go right ahead.
The width will not be changed, it'll be same width, the length?
So then, just, no, no reveal that bridge?
No, no.
Place anything in, in, uh, structure, major structure with the bridge, uh, no replace all.
Okay, but no, no changes to the width or the length, okay, thank you.
What would happen if somebody went across there, had ninety-nine tons, oh, that's two hundred thousand pounds, weight limit is eighty thousand pounds?
I understand, that's what the state makes us pose to.
You'll post that on the bridge?
Yes, sir, that's what the state makes us do.
Right, it's not all.
Lot of weight, lot of weight. Oh, man, I ain't that question asked to me before, uh, people were doing the line work, and they had a heavy piece of equipment.
Yeah, I've been on that.
And they asked me about ninety-nine tons, which weighed under that, maybe weighed over eighty thousand, and he said if it broke in, you know, who would be responsible? Would be, is insurance or, uh, posted ninety-nine tons?
I was about the company that, that didn't comply with the weight limit, who was responsible?
Well, if it was under nine, uh, two hundred thousand pounds, and the only legal run of road on eighty thousand pounds. You know, uh, road, road limit, which I know, that holds it well, but, uh, two hundred, two hundred.
Eighty-two, two eighty, if I remember right.
More twice, the li, the weight limit, you know, talking about, you know, and I just wonder, would the county be responsible for that if they drove across it, and it was under, they had a hundred and fifty thousand pound, broke it in? If they had a hundred, if it went over the weight limit, well, it's weight limit ninety-nine tons, which is right at, uh, two hundred.
That's right.
Thousand pounds.
Hundred ninety-eight thousand.
And the legal weight limit to run a road is eighty thousand pounds, all right, if they went across that bridge, had a hundred and fifty thousand pounds and broke it in, who'd be liable for the road, bridge?
I mean, I hate to answer it, it depends, but. It depends?
Smoking like a true attorney.
But, I mean, if the, the weight limit on the road is eighty thousand, and they drove a ninety thousand pound, uh, vehicle across the bridge, they violated the law.
Well, you're right there.
Special permit.
Yeah, you're right there.
Let me ask.
With, and can it get a per, you can get a permit.
But to relieve.
I don't have much more.
You can.
You love your day.
Can get a permission. You can get a permit to assess of eighty thousand pounds, but probably not a hundred and fifty thousand pounds.
If you clear the air just a little bit, uh, I'm gonna ask if, if the chairman can speak, and possibly if he speaks, all that weight, you're not gonna be on one spot on that bridge at the time.
That's right, that is.
Especially if you got a well rig or a water truck, uh, it won't be located, but it'd be stretched out. That won't say it won't fall in.
That's right.
I learned that from Duncan Johnson.
It is a tribute, you're right.
Yes, sir, please.
Item number sixteen, uh, the staff has questioned board approval of closeout, uh, documentation for the Chamber Law Elevated Board Walk, which is, uh, phase two, subject to the appropriate signage being placed out front.
With a monolithic clamp.
I had an opportunity to get a look at that in Mr. Register, and, uh, from what I can see, of course, it's not an inspection, it just, just, uh, walking the elevated walkway, it turned out real nice, I'll say that, so. All in motion to approve the certificate of file position and authorize you, Mr. Chairman, Chairman to sign.
If you authorize me on the vote, I'll do it.
I'll second.
I need a second, okay, I got a second, and Doc Spire, motion, Mr. Don Row, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, unanimous consent, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Westbrook, item number seventeen is associated with the, uh, procurement or purchasing policy for the county. Uh, we have, are proposing a modification to, the biggest modification, changes the requirement when we have to put an advertise, public advertisement out, uh, layman turn, putting that out in the newspaper. out in the newspaper, I believe, and Lindsey, jump in and help me if you don't mind, but the, the maximum or the amount that we're proposing to change is that anything that is fifty thousand or four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, forty thou, forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars or less, we would only obtain written quotes from the vendors in order to meet the purchasing policy requirements, rather than running a public advertisement in the paper and obtaining quotes in that fashion, but it's just for purchases that are four hun, forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars or less. And it actually strengthens the policy, is Lindsey in here? Lindsey, what was the other change?
Yes, sir. So it does also allow us to require written quotes from anything between three hun, three thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and up to fifty thousand, which currently, for some of that threshold up to five thousand, we only require verbal quotes, so it is requiring us to go get written documentation for things.
I want to ask you a question, are we gonna have a number of people that's contacted there?
It's a minimum of three written quotes, yes, sir.
Just so we have a record of it.
Okay. On the verbal quotes, how does that work? Just somebody calls in and gives some, gives you, purchasing person, a quote? Is there any, any documentation of verbal quote?
So currently, right now, between two thousand four hundred and ninety-nine and four thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars, it's a, or sorry, four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, we're required to have verbal quotes, that you're correct, we can call in and get a number from a company, but there's no really written documentation from that company, except it's written by us on a purchase order.
We document it based on a conversation with the vendor. So it's not like we just pull a number out of the sky and go buy it, it, we have to document it ourselves, rather than getting them to provide something and like.
And I'm a bidder myself sometimes, not here, but at the same time.
I'm sorry.
I let y'all get off.
Dr. Spire's assessment. The way it works now, and this is correct, is that from twenty-five hundred, basically, to five thousand, the employee, and probably road bridge, I would think is, is, is a big person that, that has to do this, because they, you know, has to go buy stuff, they would call, let's say they're looking for an alternator for something, and it's over twenty-five hundred dollars, they would call the various parts houses here, and they just make a note, and you tell me if I'm wrong, now, now this is what we're looking for, they'd make a note, called AutoZone, it was X number dollar, called Marion Auto Parts, it was X number dollars, and then they would write that down on the, not always on the P O, sometimes it's on a separate piece of paper, and, and that's what my people look for, to make sure that they call.
So that information is given to you?
Yes, when, when they submit the invoice, that lets us know that they made that, that phone call. And so, if what I'm hearing correctly, and what I've read, is that, that number from thirty-five hundred or three thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and above would require three written quotes coming from the vendor. So you're, you're actually lowering the requirements for the written quotes, which is good, we like that, I mean, that's, we're relying, and I'm not, I have no reason to believe, we use this policy for, I don't know how long it's been, some may know.
My personal opinion is not questioning the person that's doing it, but what, what it looks like.
Well, and, and.
Everything's not going.
The reason for it is to speed things up, if there's a tractor sitting beside the road that needs an alternator, we're gonna get an alternator, so we're saving ten dollars, but it may take us two days to get written quotes from everybody.
Quickest way, the cheapest way, then.
Yeah, and so, there's two ways to look at it, you know, maybe, and I hate to even say this out loud, maybe paid a little bit more, but it's sitting there beside the road with nobody working, there's a time value, too.
In the long run, it saves a dollar.
And maybe they'll have, they'll note it, maybe they'll note that, hopefully. It just, I don't question the people, I question process.
Yeah.
But Lindsey, even on the emergency purchases, there's gonna be a requirement to document why it's an emergency purchase, we're not just going to.
Correct, if there's an emergency purchase that happens, there's a memo required to document it after the fact and, and state the reason why it was an emergency purchase without the written quotes in advance.
Everybody said five thousand.
On the, up to fifty thousand dollars, explain that again, I want proceed, procedural of that.
Unless fifty thousand or less, the staff would be able to obtain written quotes from, let's just say it's Greater Blades, where you could call Caterpillar and get them to send you a written quote on what you need, then you call Matu or whoever else to get a written, they would have to submit a written quote to you before you could make the purchase, for fifty thousand or less. Anything over forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, we're gonna have to go, do a public advertisement and obtain quotes.
And, and basically just raise them that threshold from fifteen thousand to fifty dollars.
Yes.
Fifteen, fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand.
It'll be reviewed and monitored by?
Yes, sir, but they still have to go through the clerk's office in order to get reimbursement, and, and also by, there's two approval requirements prior to it getting paid, so, yeah, there's a, there's checks and balances, it is not just, you know, you can go out there and get three, type out three written quotes and then send it to Lindsey for approval, there'll be two approvals and then I think the clerk's office will.
All right, what's the board's pledge? We haven't had a, a motion yet, have we?
I have not had a motion yet.
Who wants to dive off and make one?
I'll offer a motion to approve the changes described by Mr. Green, the purchasing people and losses.
A motion, about a second.
Second.
Got a second. All in favor, the mo, move on, raise your right hand.
And, and if it'll help the, the board, if we see there's a problem in, in our office, we'll come see you.
Thank you, thank you. As my mama would say, money don't grow on trees, my son.
Yes, that's right. Next item, the last item on the agenda, Mr. Westbrook, request for board approval to amend the animal control interlocal agreement with municipalities, I guess the big change is clarification where if we have an interlocal with, say, Grand Ridge, then the city of Grand Ridge would make contact with the county, not every citizen in Grand Ridge making contact. And also, as prices change for the county, we would pass the changes in prices on to the municipality that we're providing services to. We're asking for the approval by the board.
You have a question? Have I asked a question? Currently, how many interlocal agreements do we have with municipalities for animal control?
So we work with the majority of them, Sneets, Alford, Grand Ridge, Malone, Greenwood, Cottondale PD does theirs, we're negotiating with Graceville, that's why some of the changes were coming, but we send out to all of them, and it's, it's up to them if they opt in or not.
Okay, I noticed that the mayor, Jacob, is here, is there an interlocal agreement, Jacob in this county, in existence right now? Mr. Mayor, do you have any?
And, and they reached out, uh, just only a couple months together, too, so that's why we wanted to refresh them, send them back out to everyone and see who was interested.
Okay, so that's currently being done, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So, so, just to clarify, Captain, somebody, yo, who you got?
Sorry, I live in Malone, I've got a problem dog that's, you know, being problematic cause, in my yard in my area, I call the town of Malone, and coordinate with them, is the town of Malone, they call animal control.
That's right.
And then, whatever happens to that animal, unless there are charges, there are costs owed by the county, then we would bill town alone.
That's right, and that's why we wanted, the last bullet point in the agreement that we updated was the clarification that, you know, we work for the municipalities, not the municipality citizens, um, because what we'll run into is, you know, you'll have a, a problem road with stray animals, and they'll be calling and racking up calls for the town or city, um, that the city or town may not have approved. The only caveat, or only reason we would deviate from that agreement, is if we're dispatched directly from the sheriff's office, if there were a, you know, excessive abuse or neglect or an attack in that matter, we would abort this and go address it immediately.
All right, just, just for clarification, I thought you said you work for the municipality and not the municipality constituents, is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
How do you do that?
So the, the municipality citizens would have to report the issue to the municipality, they would not be able to reach us directly, um, because the town or municipality will be the one incurring the cost, so they need to be involved in approving whatever, you know, work or visitation to be done, but we're not excluding anyone.
Okay, because you can't take constituents out of equations totally, because they are part of the itself.
That's right, so their municipality would have to make that decision for them.
Okay, thank you.
We better chat to get our money back, brother. That's a board's pledge. Good, brother. Got one, by Mr. Crutchfield. Second by Mr. Donough, everybody in favor, raise your right hand, unanimous consent.
Mr. Westbrook, I did want to remind you, since we're at the end, we did have a request to speak by Mr. Randy Farrell, if he's here.
I know Mr. Farrell.
Just letting you know where.
Come on, come on, Randy. I know Mr. Farrell very well. We should have taken you at front, instead of making you sit here the whole time, Randy, but, but go ahead, you have.
I knew you were trying to prepare for something like this, but I didn't realize the meeting was till about thirty minutes before this, this morning, so, I'm just gonna speak from my heart, my mouth.
That's okay.
First of all, I don't plead and complain unless you got a solution, because all things outweighs you can correct, and I think I'm better. So, Michael, as we all know, years ago, come through and changed everything. First of all, I've been married for over forty years to the same name, lived in the same place for over forty years, worked at one business for twenty-nine years, worked where I am now for sixteen years. I'm a supervisor, I understand the workforce has changed, especially since Michael, it's hard to get a good employee, hard to get dependable employees. We got to change, too, and we got to make resolutions to accommodate for how the world and soc, society has changed. So, I've called every year since Michael, I cleared everything in front of my house because every tree was destroyed, all the way to the dirt road, put my fence back up, a good little ways from the dirt road to get the county there right away, and hoped that one year, they would paint my roof. It grows up every year, and I call and have them mowed. I've asked every year that I don't have to call, because I shouldn't have to do that, that's not my job, I'm a taxpayer, we got more to come through. So the solution to it is, I was told that they mowed this June, in my area, my place wasn't mowed again, have a wife, youngins, grand youngins, they come by that driveway and can't see, get out. Mr. Rhett, this is my house, he'll tell you, it does get high enough, you can't see, get out, there's a safety issue there. That road is a main road between Shady Grove Cut Off and sixty-nine, people fly down it ridiculously fast, and there's nothing we can do about it, you can't stop, nobody wants you to. So when you pull out a driveway, it's coming off the top of that hill, you better be moving, because they might clear you out. I say the solution is that the county puts a list of the roads and areas that need to be mowed for safety reasons, and every year, when you come into Shady Grove, look there at the list and see my place needs to be mowed and mowed. You want me to miss me? That's your solution. Y'all's job is to create, I wouldn't want you to come tell me how to do construction, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you how to do your job, but I am gonna give you a suggestion, I would hope that you would do something for me, as a taxpayer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We got several up there, scattered, man.
I don't, I don't have any other speakers, Mr. Westbrook.
You want to speak instead, come on.
You recognize? My name is Jack Staver, this is my first time here, and I hate having to come down here and do this, but, as a taxpayer and a constituent, and who puts you people in office, you're sitting there right now, I'm going back to you not bidding the contractor insurance, you're derelicting your duty not doing that, I hear you, talking here about everybody and saving money and doing all this, yet we don't do that, and that's what your job is, you work for us, we don't work for you, and the people want to see that, we want to save our money, I hate spending money, but for you guys not to do that is really bad, and Mr. Crutchfield, you made a statement in one of the meetings, that you said that we had to let the other people who have the contract know we're gonna bid it, can you show me where that is in the document, because I can't find it anyplace? Do you have an answer?
What's the question again?
The question was, you made a statement, said that if we're gonna bid this out, we have to tell the person who has the contract now, that we're gonna bid it out, can you show me where that says that, any documentation?
I said if we're gonna bid it out, had to bid it out now?
No, you said that you had to let the person who has the contract now be aware that we're gonna bid it out, can you show me where it says that in your procurement documents? I mean, that's just a, that's just a story, otherwise, why would you tell somebody you're gonna bid a job? They get the R F P like everybody else does, and they bid it, and whoever the best is and meets specs and criteria, then they get the job.
I don't remember saying that we had to notify them to bid it out, if we're gonna bid it out, if Nipley had had to notify everybody, gonna be involved in bidding.
Right, but you said, we have to let the guy, I sat in this meeting and listened to this whole thing, believe me, and I keep getting sick of hearing this again, that, you know, well, we can't do this, we can't, yeah, you can, you can do anything you want, and we're, we the people want to see you do the right thing, be transparent, save our money.
But when you say we the people, are you speaking for all of the constituents of Jackson County, or are you speaking for yourself?
I'm speaking for a lot of them that won't be here, because they work during the day.
But you are speaking for yourself.
Oh, I definitely am speaking for myself.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, it doesn't make any difference.
Well, yes, it does make a difference, makes a big difference, you just said that we the people, meaning everybody in Jackson County, every voting constituent wanted to see us bid that, and that's not, that's not the case.
Okay, so I guess what you're saying.
You're giving, you're giving Commissioner Crutchfield a hard time about what he said, I'm just giving you a hard time about what you said.
Well, I'll just give you a hard time, that, you think everybody in Jackson County wants to waste our money?
No, I know they don't.
Okay, well, then, that's part of the procedure, that's why you're here, it says, it says in your government, it says you're supposed to do the best for the county, City of Jackson.
We, we engage people all the time based on qualifications, not based on, you've not, you've not been recognized yet, you've not been recognized yet, you've not been recognized yet by the chairman.
Hold it. Mr. Dean?
Yeah, just as a point of clarification, as it relates to the comment made about notification, uh, and I don't know what Mr. Crutchfield said, or anybody said, but, in the agreement that we have, there are, there is language that we notify our current insurance provider within, I believe it's ninety days prior to, uh, an R F P, but, you know, again, that, I'm just, you know, I don't want to mislead anybody, that is in the agreement of the insurance here, but that would be the same for anybody, it's ninety days.
Weren't we told that by the Florida League of Cities, I'm sorry, by the Florida Cities?
Association of CrossFit, and that's still that board, I'm scared.
Hold on just a minute, Doc.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now you recognize.
In defense of the question asked from Mr. Crutchfield, that is documented in the actual current provider of insurance for the county, that is a ninety-day requirement that, that the current carrier must receive.
Okay, so you put your R F P out, you're gonna put it out tomorrow, I mean, you put it out with everybody else, it's ninety days, it's a time.
But again, but again, in defense of this board, I think that, one of the bridge, this board has unanimously decided upon that issue, so why we keep visiting that, I rise to board order.
Because it's not a dead issue, that's why.
Well, I think, according to this board, the majority.
You, I voted for you, and I'm really sorry I did that to you.
That's fine, I'm sorry, you did, sir, but I'm gonna stand for what's right, whether you vote for me or not.
Well, what's right is right, and what's Well, what's right is right, and what's right is saving the citizen's property money.
Administrative procedure says that prevailing party must bring the issue up again. Mr. Cressfield, Mr. Don Froy, myself, with the prevailing parties.
Um, can you show me that, where is this at?
Play was voted upon.
Right, but okay, in the same meetings, the same prevailing party, but if it's a new meeting, it's a new issue. Every time it's a new issue, every time you bring it up, it's a new issue, as long as it's not in the same meeting.
It's described as renewed in motion.
I'm only referring to what's included in the Robert's Rules of Order, upon their procedures. We may have different interpretations on the, you know. But I'm not here to debate your vote for me or not. I'm going to do what's right as a commissioner, whether you vote for me or not.
You got anything else, Mr. Dean?
There's no other requests for.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, come forward.
My name is Sally Baptiste, I'm here within Alford, Florida, Jackson County. Um, I'm in agreement that I don't think the process for the bidding for the insurance is correct. I think it needs to be revisited. Um, we should do it right. It should be an open bid, so everybody knows what's going on. And I will question the Robert's Rule of Order. I'm going to go double check. I, I used to mess with that quite a bit, but I'd have to go double check, but I don't think that's the Robert's Rules of Order on that one. So, I think we should be able to revisit the way this has been handled. Because it doesn't look like it's been handled correctly, that we haven't done a proper bidding, open bidding on. Uh, the other thing too, the Florida Senate Bill one eighty and the Live Local Act. I need to know how familiar you are with it. Both of these things take away local government rights, the rights, the state taking over the rights from the local government. And I really would like to know what your opinion is, what you know about it. Are you supporting it? If you're opposing it, what are you doing to try to stop it? Because I don't think we should be losing our rights at a local level. I don't think the state should continue to take over. And again, that's the Florida Senate Bill one eighty and the Live Local Act. That both take away rights from the local government to do certain things. I won't have enough time to go into a whole presentation of it, but there's a variety of things. I've been looking into it, and I really want to know where you stand on that. Because we need to do something about that, I disagree. And some of the things I was hearing earlier today, it's like, wait a minute, we're having to follow. Once again, the state is taking control. The other thing, which is what I handed out to you. Um, there's a lot of solar farms coming around. I'm sure everybody is seeing the solar farms popping up all over the place. And it was just recently, well, it was back in May, I think, because it was when it was first reported, that it's been reported now, it's been confirmed, that in these solar panels that are all made in China, there are devices in these panels. And this is a security issue. And the information I gave you gives you some links so you can read what I was reading up on this. And I really do think for the safety of this community, I think we need to be taking a look at what they're putting in these fields. Because if they are in fact putting devices, China is putting devices in these panels, and we're putting panels all over the place, I think we really better take a closer look.
May I interrupt you one second? Our fire chief's sitting right there, take note of that, Charlie, if you will. Thank you, go ahead, ma'am.
Um, anyway, we really need to take a closer look and see what's happening. I'm, I happen to be against the solar farms for a lot of reasons, but when they came up with this at the same time, and this is really true too. If people have solar panels on your house, you might want to think if they got devices put in them too. And I would, well, would I ever thought that China would do this, I guess I would. But here, you got some evidence here that they actually are doing it. They've got conclusive evidence that it's happening. So, I think we need to take a look at what's going on in the fields here so we can defend ourselves. And definitely think twice before you go and approve putting another solar farm out there. Make sure what we, what way you know is going on here. And that's it for right now. Like I said, I have a lot of information to go over, but I usually have two or three minutes.
Ma'am, great.
Okay, thank you.
That's the board policy.
Yes.
If we ask you some questions, we're going to give you a little more time, but come back again if you want to come back when you're prepared to do.
Okay, I definitely would like to revisit the insurance bidding process. I think we need to take, take another look at that. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Yes, ma'am, come on.
My name is Karen Shone, and I am from Greenwood. And, um, as I have been sitting here and listening, I have to support what Sally and Jack just said regarding the insurance. So, I have a question for you, and that is, why do you think not soliciting proposals from multiple insurance carriers is a good idea? Because basically, you just spent about fifteen minutes talking about the importance of getting bids for things like an alternator, but yet when it comes to something as expensive as insurance, you're saying, no, we're going to just pick that one regardless. So, that is not an acceptable answer when it comes to the people who want to know why you chose that particular carrier and what choices did we have as to multiple carriers. Many things happened through the years that make policies with different carriers meet different needs, and maybe you should be looking at them. And I really love what Commissioner Westbrook said when he said, don't question people. I'm not questioning your motives, I'm questioning the process. I don't think the process was fair for we the people. It's our money, it's our budget, and it should be spent under our guidelines and with our oversight. The other thing that bothers me is SB one eighty and the Live Local Act, which is what Sally was talking about. This bill, Live Local, was passed in twenty twenty-four. SB one eighty was just passed now, and they have a very troublesome phrase in them which says prohibits local governments from. And then there are a variety of things that local governments cannot do in favor of developers. Now, you just selected Shoemaker Advisors as your lobbying company. They're from Tampa, and I have a group up here that actually knows what's going on in the panhandle. But I would want to know from Shoemaker, did they support SB one eighty and the Live Local Act? Or did they lobby against it? Because if they supported it, they certainly are not going to be supporting the things that we are going to do as we try to develop our community the way we the people who live here want it developed. Developers will come in like they're doing in South Florida, and they're putting up complexes without oversight, without discussion, without public input, and that is really a hundred percent wrong. So, I'm requesting that you look at those two bills and then speak with Shoemaker and see where did they sit when it came to the passing of those bills? And you might want to talk to Shane Abbott also. Why did he vote for it? Why did they vote to allow developers to come in carte blanche and put up whatever they want, wherever they want, without local input? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And one other question. Now, you got, well, we glad to.
I just wanted to say, my name is Priscilla Beverly Cowan, I live in Alford. I just want to say there are several of us, Mr. Dumper, that who have been wondering why it is that the contract for a very expensive insurance is not being put out to contract. And, and just as Karen said, on item number seventeen, you were going back and forth about money under fifty thousand dollars, whereas, as Karen said, a very expensive, expensive contract for insurance, where you could probably save a lot of money, although I don't know that. And this is my first get-go, like even talking to you all. But I, but I have a question, and I'd really like to see that it be addressed. I know that it is complicated, I know that there's a lot of work to be done, but it seems to be something that really should be done. It might not change anything, but the appearance is that it should be. Uh, that's number eighteen that you had under fifty thousand. Um, another thing I was wondering, if I have time, is about the animal control problem. I happen to have a dog next door that's barking all the time, and it drives me nuts. I don't know who to talk to, I don't know what to do. I've talked to my neighbor, she's a little tri, she's got three dogs, she's breeding dogs, just awful. But I put up a fence, and at least now that I go out my front door, they don't bark at me. Anyway, um, Karen has a lot of information. I just have a couple of questions. As I live here, I love it here, I want it to be nice, I want everybody to be happy. I came from someplace that used to be happy, and it's not happy anymore. I just want to be left home, save some money, not go broke, not have development all over the place. Keep my property, let me be happy. That's all I got to say.
We glad you did.
We glad you did.
You've come to the right place.
That's right.
Yeah, I love it here. Alfred, right on the lake, couldn't be happier. Go get a little boat, gonna go float around. Anyway, that's all I can say. Appreciate you taking the time to listen.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, Michael.
I think a lot of this is brought on by, mainly by the insurance situation we had. And the way I looked at it, you know, we are a member of the small county coalitions or whatever, all small counties in the state of Florida. And we get insurance through fax, which I figure is, when you're a member of something, you know, you can get things. That's always, it's a bigger group, cheaper. And, uh, I asked insurance agents proposing, and he said he couldn't write anything from fax. And that tells me, you know, you don't have any other insurance agencies coming in wanting to do, uh, put a bid in. And, uh, we already should be able to get it cheaper than we can get from most of the other agencies. And we don't have any of them coming in, and that's where I base my feelings on, plus the service. I mean, we have them for years, 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 and, and you, we're not actually just getting insurance from Milton. They are agents for fax. You know, we are insurance, and just like him, uh, he supplies insurance from companies, same way. He's an agent for them, but he can't write for that, and by that alone, uh, you know, we, General Rue should be getting it at a cheaper rate, being a member of a big group. That's where I base my feelings on.
I just have a statement. If you haven't put it on RFP, how can you know what you're asking? You just said you don't know what you're asking. And how would you know if you don't put it out on RFP?
Well, again, if he did, and you had to be coming to lower bidder, and you did it just to get your feet in the door, I think that's happened a lot of times. And you, you're not going to be happy unless he awarded him the bid. In the back.
Believe this or not, I have no plans to speak for this board today. Uh, you got every right. I didn't, I didn't, excuse me, I did not, I don't know any of the people in this public. I've talked to none of them. So, I just want, I don't know if the public is viewing this, but the vote on the board to know your constituents are speaking to you for a reason. Now, I, I wouldn't want to speak even through that until Mr. Cressfield, you addressed a few things there from the podium. Sometimes when you say things in your position, you're in a position of authority, and it can be portrayed as fact, even if it's your opinion, and you say that, it's my opinion. Um, but if it's not accurate, then some people can walk away thinking, well, that was a factual statement, it was true, and it just, was your opinion and not something you made an effort to intentionally mislead anybody on, but it was portrayed as a, as a fact. If I'm saying that correctly, I don't, I don't want an opinion, I'm just trying to preface what I'm about to say. The comments that you made that were in your mind for justification of why you would not vote to go out RFP are, I'm sorry, but they're just, they're incorrect. They're not based on fact, it is not the way the industry works. Um, unfortunately, just because you're a member of the Florida Association of Counties doesn't mean that their trust is more efficient or run more efficiently than any other trust that, that insures municipalities, which there's, there's only three. So, the reason why there's not insurance agents knocking down your door is because of this process. It is a significant investment of time and resources to commit to a, when you walk into a scenario where logic leaves the room. Logic has left the room here. Logically, you would bid this because I am bringing to you a significant amount of savings. So, for an example, I had this in my briefcase because I was reviewing it with someone verbally in a meeting before I got here. This is a response to an RFP for Taylor Kimmel. Okay? In this response, which will be public record soon, they have not released its public record, but it's, it's public enough. It's been, or I wouldn't be showing it to you. There's thirty-three percent savings for Taylor Kimmel in this proposal. Thirty-three percent. There is no, I don't, I don't know, you know, under what scenario that you wouldn't want to evaluate that. Um, we do business on the state of Florida. This carrier, uh, has, um, hundreds of millions of dollars of premium. This is not a fly-by-night operation. The, the insinuation of that is, is in error. Um, these are, these are top competing companies. You don't have people knocking down your door because they, it's an exclusive market, this is specialized services. There's not, everybody doesn't have access to this, and, and they're not going to go, you know. I can promise you in South Florida, it's a, it's a major, major competitive, uh, place, but the rural counties, you get overlooked a lot. But I'm here providing that services and providing a service point. So, I just want to clear the air on that, and just note, if you choose for, for, for political reasons that you just are going to be committed to your, to your local, this is not a me against them issue. This is a providing services and products for the county of Jackson County. I, I like all the Milton's, I'm friends with those guys. They're good people, and it's not against them. This is not it, I just happen to be in, in a competing marketplace here, and we happen to be more competitive at this time in our, in, in the economy over the, for, for numerous reasons, numerous things going to that. And that pendulum may swing one day. It doesn't appear to be swinging anytime soon, but it may, and that is what's happened with your current carrier. When you entered into the contract with them, the pendulum was over there, and they were probably most competitive at the time because of their reinsurance contracts, because of their loss history, because of a number of different things, and that has swung. You are, you're what, you're, you choose to pay several hundred thousand dollars more if, if that's what you choose to do. That's what you, but it's, it should be an acknowledged thing that you're choosing to do that. You're not, you have options. I'm here to, I'm here to tell you, you have options. I'm not wasting my time, I'm not doing this for practice. We, we do a good job of what we do. I have letters of reference in this for several people that are ecstatic about the service we provide. The increased amount of service I made all came from the carrier you're with now, every one of them. Okay? So, it is a choice that you're consciously making to not bid this in order to stay in partnership with your current agent. And, and if, if, just be not, there's no other excuses about it. I mean, it's, it's valid, I mean, it's not. You've got to evaluate the service points and everything else, and we have that here. I just want to clear that up. You get to make that choice. I don't think it's good policy, and I don't think any, most of the citizens agree it's good policy. Uh, and so that's why you're being challenged on that decision. Uh, but I'm here to tell you for, for Jackson County, you could be receiving something like this if you went through that process. It gives you an opportunity to evaluate the facts and look at it. And if, if there's any other questions you have, or Mr. Cressfield, or any other thoughts you have, I'm happy to.
Just identify yourself if you.
I'm sorry, we're the record. I am Michael Redster with Boyd Insurance North Florida Division. My office is in Bristol. I've lived here my entire life, uh, and I am a neighbor to Jackson County. Thanks for the time.
I just like to rise to the point of orders that we would address this issue before, and the board has voted in affirmative. They made the decision in affirmative, I don't see why we should resist in this. And if you keep going until the decision is, that meets somebody's desire, I don't think, I don't think that's wrong with every decision.
Michelle. We get you, you Michelle first.
You mentioned that, uh, you are, we are a part of the Association of Small Counties. Um, I'm a, a union member of the United Federation of Teachers and the AFT. That doesn't mean that everything that they do, I agree with and mostly the things that they do, I disagree with. I called the Florida Association of Small Counties and I asked them specifically whether they were going to lobby against SB one eighty and the Live Local Act. I called them when the Live Local Act was in place, was, uh, beginning and SB one eighty. And I was told, oh, we don't know anything about that. So how are they servicing our small counties if they don't know that there are bills in front of our Florida legislature that is taking the power away from our small counties?
Who are you talking to?
This was someone in the legal department. I don't know, I don't remember their name off the top of my head. I'll have to go back to my notes from last year.
Is it a Senate bill? May I, may I excuse myself one time? Is it a Senate bill from last legislative session or is it proposed to the next session?
No, the Live Local Act was passed in twenty-four. The SB one eighty was passed in twenty-five. Both of them have the same verbiage, which is prohibits the local government from. One has to do with zoning and planning and one has to do with emergency services, which you just asked. So the state is attempting to usurp the power of the local community in favor of building. And we all know that what goes on in the peninsula comes up here about five years later. So rather than being behind the curve and saying, no, this isn't a good idea, we should be working on these things now to make sure that they don't happen. Otherwise, we could see high-rise complexes and all kinds of apartment buildings going up on our agricultural land. And we have no say because zoning and the comprehensive plan is now in favor of the developers.
Thank you. Go ahead and come on down. Hopefully our senator will pay attention to that.
My name is Susan Cofman and since the insurance was brought up, I'm like that one guy and I have spoken to you. Um, so you get to talk back there. Um, the thing about the insurance, I wanna thank our county commissioners because we voted them in. I'm a citizen, I'm a taxpayer, okay? And they look and have to see our best interest. And I'm not trying to put a plug in for, for Citizen Academy, but if you would take Citizen Academy, you would learn how this county works. And so the thing about it is, is like, I talked to Mr. Milton. I don't have nothing against Mr. Milton, but I wanted to understand how y'all voted. I'm a citizen, I'm a taxpayer. He explained to me about the fact thing. The other ones that are trying to get y'all to put a bid out there, they're not a part of it. So y'all made that decision, whenever y'all made that decision to be a part of fact, I applaud y'all for that. And he explained, other, other companies might come in lower, but how do you know down the road? Like I told Mr. Milton, I have an agent. I've been with him for a long time. He tries to get the best deal for me. If somebody come in and said, oh, I can get you a better deal, me and my husband are gonna talk it over. We're gonna say, what's the best interest in our benefit for it? And that, I just wanna applaud y'all and thank you. I think y'all have looked at this. I know that maybe some citizens don't agree, they're taxpaying citizens, just like I am, but I agree with y'all.
Thank you. Anybody wanna vote? Come on, come on, man in the back, come on. I'm sorry, I, I cut you out of a term. I apologize, but go ahead, you got it now.
My name is Parsons and, uh, this is actually my first meeting. So I apologize if me being unscripted is unorthodox. Um, but it feels like I, uh, should say it's like so. Insurance is sort of above my head. Uh, a couple of months ago, I actually got my first glimpse of it with M. Better Health. So I can't really say yay or nay on any of the issues that were discussed earlier. But I will share one philosophy that has helped me throughout my short life. If I can't get what I need with what I have been given by my father, I didn't need it. And that's sort of why I often tell a couple of months ago, I've been holding my feet on getting insurance. But the folks at PanCare sort of bombarded me with a bunch of information, so I can't play. Um, so setting that iss- issue aside, uh, because I have no more knowledge on it. Uh, I would like to thank you, uh, for your service. Because despite all the headaches of the legislation and the finances and juggling the home, uh, job and all that fun stuff, y'all still come to work every day. Uh, y'all still talk to us. And maybe some of you a little more genuine than others, but that's not my judgment to make. I put you in you and your father. Swear, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Name, name. His name?
Did you say Parsons?
Sir, will you tell us the name, Mr. Crutchfield, request your name?
Is that, is that your last name or first name? What's your first name? For the record, for the record.
That's right. God, everybody keeping that bid ain't that wonderful. We get it all right. Anybody here, sir? I'm gonna give you about three minutes. Well, yeah, that's the board policy. I made a David, what, David A. from it, but anyway, we almost there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Let me grab my notes real quick. My name is Ben Nacilia, I'm with, um, Tall Timbers Research Station over in Leon County, Florida. Um, I'm sure you've heard of us at least tangentially, but, uh, Tall Timbers was established in nineteen fifty-eight as a research station, um, and land conservancy working on the, uh, implementation of prescribed fire as a conservation tool and a land management.
Can I interrupt you to say you're from Tall Timbers Research Station?
That's correct.
Good, you, you, you gonna get more than three minutes.
Well, hopefully I won't need it.
That's a good, that's a good, that's a good thing.
I appreciate it. Um, so there's two projects that we have coming up that we've been going around to all the counties in the Big Bend that we wanted to share about that cover the full eleven counties, including Jackson County. Um, so I'll just jump right into those. The first of those is gonna be an RCPP project. We just finished one. It's a USDA program grant that Tall Timbers is just finishing up our previous one and we were just awarded another one for the next five years. So we were awarded a five-year, twenty-five million dollar grant from USDA for land owner assistance, land management assistance. And that really comes in two different flavors. Um, first is financial assistance and that's really for your land managers, landowners who know what they're doing, know how to manage their property and just need the funds to be able to do that. Um, that's available for them. And then the second aspect, um, sorry, let me go back. For the financial assistance, that's between a seventy-five to a hundred percent cost share of that cost. Um, the second aspect in lit is land management assistance itself. That land management assistance is for landowners who maybe inherited a piece of property or have a piece of property and wanna take care of their property and wanna get it in the best shape they can, but just don't necessarily have the expertise. Tall Timber staff come out and they help them with practices, whether that's, uh, tree planting, prescribed fire, invasive species management, forest stand improvement, things like that. It really runs a whole gamut of what it takes to manage rural property and keep things in good running order. So, um, there's both of those aspects. And this kind of goes into our second project as well, which is with the Florida Wildlife Corridor Foundation. Um, I'm sure you've heard of the Florida Wildlife Corridor Act, um, that was passed back in twenty twenty-one. Um, Florida Wildlife Corridor Foundation is a nonprofit organization that brings people together, brings together partners to work towards that mission and piece, piece those, uh, pieces together, right? And make the connections to create the corridor essentially. They partner with Tall Timbers as sort of the regional expert in the Big Bend region to help bring people together, help work towards that mission and connect all of our big conservation areas and have those linear corridors and connected areas for all the critters and also for us to, to be able to enjoy in perpetuity. Um, big aspect of that project that we're sharing about here is that we have a marketing and campaign budget, let's call it. Um, that's gonna be sharing information out to landowners. So we're doing direct mailers, we're doing Facebook advertisements, newspaper advertisements, probably on the radio. Uh, pretty much anywhere we can get eyeballs on, on this information, um, we're gonna be sharing it. And that's sharing information on the wildlife corridor, what it is, what your role might be in it. And then also on our RCPP project and that there's dollars out there for land managers, landowners who might be in the corridor, who might be interested in doing this kind of activity. How do you take care of your little piece of the corridor type of thing? Um, and so we're gonna be sharing that out pretty soon. I just have been coming around and wanted to share with all the county commissioners. So when inevitably someone asks you, you know, I got this thing in the mail, is this, is this a real opportunity? You can tell them absolutely. Um, and I should have mentioned earlier for that cost share program, the RCPP program, it's not just for large landowners. It's not thousand, two thousand, three thousand acres exclusively. To anyone over ten acres is welcome to apply. It's encouraged to apply. So absolutely, bit ever comes up, if you could encourage your constituents as well to, uh, apply for the program, that would be great. So that's pretty much it.
You're welcome at this board anytime.
Absolutely. Um, and I have a couple of handouts just on those two programs that I can leave with you.
So, so if I'm a landowner with ten acres or more and I'm interested in land management, using Tall Timbers for land management, is there a cost, uh, to me as landowner or?
No, it should be covered in that financial assistance aspect. Yeah, so the land management assistance, financial assistance coming.
Yeah, that's a very good problem.
Depends on a case by case, depending on what you apply for, what, you know.
I practiced one of them at my place every day.
All right.
So we're glad to have you.
So if I have ten acres, are, are there any other criteria that would apply to that landowner before they can apply or seek assistance?
No, everyone's welcome to apply. I think the only recommendation that our staff gave me is that, um, you have a forest, forest stand number. Forget the exact term, but through the, um, through the Forest Service, State Forest Service.
What is that?
Yeah, farm number. Um, so if you get that out of the way now, then once that application opens up, then you'll be ready to go. But otherwise, as long as you have that, anyone over ten acres is welcome to apply and try and get some of that assistance.
You gonna get where you can influence the game commission more? I won't hold you to that question. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Dean, you had some, one more thing about exactly meeting?
Yes, sir, I thank goodness.
So our special counsel in, um, the litigation with APS, um, have requested an executive session, uh, to discuss litigation strategy. Right now, we're looking at, um, four o'clock on the day of our next board meeting. So our plan right now is for the.
On the night?
Uh, yeah, the, um, our. No, not on the night, sorry.
Two weeks from today.
The twenty-sixth. So they'll be appearing, uh, via Zoom, uh, from Tallahassee, um, for that. That's our plan right now unless the board has some rejection to that.
So, I mean, how long do you think it will last every day? Half an hour to an hour?
I was afraid it might go a little over an hour. That's why I wanted to go ahead and put it at four. They're, they're also in Eastern time, so that's five o'clock their time. So they're having to start, you know, after hours.
We can't tie.
About four thirty.
I'm sorry, I don't wanna ask a question.
That's fine, they'll make themselves available.
Maybe I get to. Now, what I wanna ask, if we can't tie that into September the fourth, Cameron?
So there are some, uh, motion deadlines that are coming up in September, um, that we, we wanna kind of get ahead of.
Yeah, I don't, I don't follow you there at all, but I just know we gotta meet on the fourth, especially that's the reason I was asking.
I wouldn't do it in the head of our next meeting if we didn't do it at four thirty instead of four, uh, four o'clock. It would depress it for me.
What about y'all, Dr. Spire? If we do it in the head of our next meeting?
Four thirty on the. I think of the evening meeting.
Yes.
That's right.
That all right.
That's right.
We're all fine with it.
Four thirty.
Thank you, that's all I need.
Okay. Anybody got more questions?
We need a motion on that. If we can do it, make sure we get it out of the house.
Okay.
A motion? Yes. I'll offer a motion that we hold the executive session as described by Ms. Jordan. Uh, what's the date of our next meeting?
August twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth? Uh, at four thirty P M. Central Time, August twenty-sixth.
How about, how about a second? Got a motion and a second? Left and right? All in favor, raise your hand. All, all the same time?
Mr. Westbrook, I have one more thing in connection. Um, I, I spoke with each commissioner about the potential of surplusing the lot adjacent to our parking lot, uh, address of forty-four fifty-five Marion Street. Uh, I'm looking for Board approval to go ahead and surplus that in accordance with our policy.
I'm sorry, what?
Uh, yeah, go ahead, tell us a little more about that.
It's the, uh, the vacant lot that was purchased by the county, uh, several years ago and it's adjacent to our county corner from the parking lot, uh, right, the county parking lot.
Yeah, it's on, it's on below it. Yeah, I, I.
Down near the old county jail? Near the old county jail?
To the east side. Just, just, just to the east of that.
Okay.
You're, you're not talking about the sun. That's your not excited camp.
Yeah, that's.
If we surplus this, wh- what does that mean actually? Do we have to take, uh, can we put a minimum price on it?
We would solicit, uh, I'm not familiar with the policy. I don't know if, uh, Brett or, uh, Lindsey are familiar with the policy, but, uh, we, there's a process that we would go for.
I just wanna make sure that we don't, aren't obliged to sell it for too little. I'd rather keep it than sell it for.
We have an option.
I mean, at some point in time, we purchased that piece of property. I think Dr. Spire was on the board at the time from Pat Crisp. And it was, uh, purchased to build the new administration building on it, which obviously never happened. It would be nice to be able to, it's a mandate that we get what we paid for, uh, or at least close to it.
We can bring back and add the proposed advertisement to the board. Before we move forward, I wanted to make sure that the board was then agreeing.
Thank you very much. Everybody all right with that?
I think consensus is okay, Mr. Jordan. Consensus is okay, Mr. Frank.
And we can have a vote, you won't have a vote.
I'm sure Ms. Jordan said so.
Anybody got anything?
I just wanted to get, uh, real quick and I've talked to Brett, uh, just a quick update on the mill pond. Are we still pretty much, uh, moving forward in accordance with what you indicated to me the last time we talked about that?
I'm gonna have you answer that when it be good. Go ahead.
With that, uh, spray application, uh, as needed and then the, uh, uh, treatment right after Labor Day?
Yes, that's right. They came up and the co- the state contractor, uh, did a application two weeks ago, I believe, possibly three. I'm not exactly sure. Um, on the upper end, kind of just outside of the park and we are scheduled to have the full pond treated from the park, putting the chemical into the waterway the week at, the week of Labor Day. The Labor Day is on Monday, so that, that week.
So, uh, Labor Day is on Monday.
So we're looking at Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday after that.
And he just said, he just said September though, didn't he?
Yeah.
It will.
Not you, I'm not saying you. I'm talking about the man doing the spray.
Oh, right.
Hmm, he just said September, so it might not be third quarter yet.
Yeah. Well, we can, we've locked that in since. We've already talked to the park, um, because we'll have to coordinate with them for use of the facility. So we've got all that worked out for that week.
The, the gentleman does most of his spraying, does a lot for community process and stuff and he, sometimes he gets behind.
Is that Derek Hustle who's gonna actually do it or is it somebody else?
So the contract sprayer is a private company on, on state contract. However, Derek will perform the treatment at the park.
Derek gets behind it. That's what I would say. And we've had a commitment from the water manager district to help us with the paper, paper of all the chemicals. But what happens to that stuff, once they spray it down, it's beautiful. And then it catches another hole and here it comes back. And they got to spray it more times than once in a while to keep it back. That's where it is.
While we're just talking about the mill pond, um, and I know, when, when's the last time that we had a? While we're just talking about the mill pond, um, and I know, when, when's the last time that we had a drawdown? Um, was it, it's been several years ago.
Yes, there have been, uh.
Total drawdown, we did a partial.
I believe it was twenty nineteen, we did the head wall project at the park, and that was a full drawdown.
Has, uh, anyone received any requests for a drawdown to make repairs to piers, docks, boathouses?
I have, yes.
Is that something that we entertain and discuss? I mean, is there, what's the, what's the, the, the negative associated with the, uh, drawdown during the winter?
Lack of access, that's, that's really it, so any, any work can be done at any time, I mean, Eric, I don't know necessarily that it makes it that much easier, um, in fact, most people probably work off of a boat versus the must, that's under there. And you still can't, even with the drawdown, you can't walk around under your dock and whatnot, because it's so thick. So, I mean, I, we have had that request, but more often than not, I say, they, the citizens, probably don't want to figure out a way to work on without it.
They can't get around the trees and stuff, now down the trail of the mill, they ain't running pretty good up there, but it's different with all the trees on site. It's not a fine science, really. That's it. All right.